Good morning. We were waiting for the bell to ring and just didn't hear it. So I apologize for being a few minutes late. Right. So, welcome. This is the Wednesday, July 5th, meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. I will note for the record that all commissioners are present here in the courthouse, and we will start with the public statement read by Commissioner Thomas.
Good morning. We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear, and we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC.
Thank you. It's now time for department updates. And do we have Ms. Kelly with us? Good morning. We don't, we can't hear you. I don't know if it's at our end or yours.
She's unmuted.
No? TSD. Do we have anyone who can help us here? We have Greg Crone in the audience, so he's looking into it here. For those that don't know, Mr. Crone is the head of our Technical Services Department. While we're waiting, is there anybody present in the NatU Hill Room who has a department update? Why don't you go ahead, Ms. Rich?
Thank you. I just wanted to announce that there will be a road closing beginning Monday. The tent through no later than the 17th. It is for an emergency bridge repair. It is Business 37 North as you exit I-69, the Still Trust Bridge that's there. So there will be detours. They will be noted at the intersections, 45, 46 bypass, also on I-69. So I just want to put that out there. We realize Old 37 North is closed also, but there are ways around, and this actually could not be helped, so we can get that bridge repaired and get it back open.
Is it currently closed off? Because it was not yesterday.
It's not closed off. We have, we have steel plates covering the hole that has developed in the roadway. So, but it's scheduled, we had to go through the permits with NDOT and coordinate the road closing, so it should happen still on, come Monday, the tent.
Okay. Thank you.
And where is Old 37 North closed at?
Old 37 North is the bicentennial pathway project. So from Bethel Lane North is closed. The fire department does have access to get in and out for emergency services. The detour route there is to take the Bethel Lane to Old Myers, Bolting House, and Old Myers Road. We did install a temporary traffic signal. I've received a lot of questions about that traffic signal, but it is just for the detour. It will be removed when that project's completed later this fall.
Thank you. Thanks. Thank you. Any comments or questions? Okay, now let's see if we have Ms. Kelly online. No, we still can't hear you. I believe we have our Emergency Management Director here in house, and so let's, let's try this. Okay. Good morning.
Good morning. So with our atypical weather pattern that we've had lately, even for Indiana, we've had a lot of severe weather lately. So I wanted to take this opportunity this morning to maybe explain a couple of things that we've had going on in the county. So the first thing that I wanted to talk about was our cooling centers. So there's a little bit of a confusion between cooling centers and shelters. So shelters are typically hosted by the Red Cross for staffing purposes. They provide a place to sleep and usually meals. Cooling centers and warming centers kind of go hand in hand, you know, just different goals, of course, but, you know, same purpose. They provide a place to rest and cool down or warm up, depending on the situation. You can charge your devices, and we typically have those at fire stations so that we can provide first aid and basic life support services, so. This particular instance, we had them on Thursday, oh, excuse me, Friday and Saturday because there were power outage issues, and the fire stations have generator backup. So that was a particular reason why we chose fire stations this go-around. Also, emergency kits, just taking a moment to plug emergency kits for your home and for your car. If you visit ready.gov, that is a great resource for the lists of items to have in those kits, so. Thank you.
So are questions or comments from my colleagues? How do people find out about where the cooling stations are and the hours that they're open?
Sure. So we put together a flyer, and we have that posted on our Facebook page. We also have that posted on Twitter and our website. Now, this go-around, we had a lot of issues with connectivity, as did most of the people in the county, so the website was a little bit behind, so I do apologize for that. But our Facebook page was up to date. We also try to share that amongst the local resources, the health department, faith-based
And did this also go out on the emergency alert?
Yes, it did this time, too. Because of those connectivity issues, we pushed it out through the alert system as well.
So another reason for people to sign up for that.
Absolutely.
And I know also that you work closely with the highway department on where the roads are blocked, trees are down, things like that. So I think people need to be aware of the fact that there is good collaboration between our departments.
Definitely. We try to post those road closures as they become known to us, so.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Thanks for being here today. So let's try Ms. Kelly again. Hmm. Any suggestions about what to do here? So it's on her end. Okay. Ms. Kelly's going to try to have Jamie Ford, her assistant, try logging on, and we'll see if that, otherwise, perhaps if you would log off and rejoin the Zoom, that might help Those electrons sometimes aren't very helpful.
You can always hear the item later.
Say yeah. Give just a few seconds here and see what happens. In the meantime, I hope everybody enjoyed the parade yesterday. There were a lot of folks out. And we need to have, for TSD, could you please promote Jamie Ford to be a panelist? And we'll try to see if we can get Ms. Ford on. Okay. Let's try it one more time.
Yes, one more time. Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you for all the effort.
Great. So just a couple of updates. We are monitoring information on the updated vaccines for COVID. They are expecting to roll out in September. Experts are suggesting that if you are not up to date with your COVID vaccine currently, that you should talk to your provider about the available vial valid vaccine. The Public Health Clinic has vaccines available for all ages. To schedule an appointment, you can call 812-353-3244.
Any comments or questions?
No, I don't.
None, thank you. Is the new COVID vaccine going to be a combination with the flu vaccine? And if not, do you know when the flu vaccines will be rolling out?
They are still doing trials of the combo flu and COVID vaccines, but we do not have any information on whether that will be happening in the fall. But flu vaccines will be available beginning later this fall, about the same time in September.
Great. Thank you for that. Thanks for your patience in getting together with us.
Yes, so sorry.
Okay. Let's move on. This is time for public comment. These are for items not on the agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes per person, and when you speak, please give us your name and tell us whether or not you're a Monroe County resident. Is there anyone who wishes to speak, public comment?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is David Henry. I am a resident of Van Buren Township in Monroe County. While I wear many hats in the community that put me in this room from time to time today, I speak as, on behalf of my profession in homeland security and emergency management, having spent over 1,000 hours in emergency operations centers over the past 20 years around the country and teaching on those subjects at Indiana University. First, I want to say I appreciate the comment and effort by the Emergency Management Director, Ms. Niebel, and the updates she provided to the board this morning. But I would like to also add and request that the County Board of Commissioners assure a full after-action report of the 2023 derecho is conducted by the Emergency Management Agency and that the board also inquire on the status of the county's emergency management plan, or CEMP. The CEMP, of course, is our playbook for the community that we use in times of crisis. It's required by federal and state agencies to receive our grant funding and is reviewed and signed by the Board of Commissioners every five years. The CEMP, according to current public record, suggests that it has been last reviewed in 2018, which would mean 2023 is the year for review and re-signature. If the members of the board and the agencies and our government partners are unaware of the CEMP, this poses several challenges that may explain some of the misconceptions about the derecho event last week. This should be known to public officials with a role in response, should be exercised regularly, and updated as we learn where our gaps may be in our response and our organization for the whole community, and that includes private sector power restoration as well as mutual aid activities. Secondly, I ask that you assure that the EMAC is responsive to you and asks for a publicly available after-action report on the recent hazards we've experienced. That's an emergency management best practice. It's part of the understanding of mitigation and response and recovery, and should include some basic questions that should be answered for the community, including: Was the Emergency Operations Center activated partially or fully? Why or why not? If so, who is our currently designated public information officer in the CEMP that would allow for the providing of regular updates to the community, internal and external stakeholders? What steps were assured to take for food safety in our community as foods begin to spoil four hours after non-refrigeration? What was the continuity of government plan for executives that may have been out of the community during the time of the derecho, and who is responsive in those executive spaces? Asking these questions is essential. In the past two months, our community has had two tornadoes, a severe weather event, a air quality event, and now a land hurricane, which is what a derecho is. And it's pretty clear the effects of climate change are here, and we need to take a good look at our plans. So I know some people appear here with some, maybe irrational criticism sometimes of the board. This isn't one of those cases. This is meant to be constructive, and I hope the good questions are going to be asked over the next few months. Thirty-three percent of our community lives in poverty. They just threw out their paychecks and their refrigerators this week. The demands on the township trustees and our food safety and our food security spaces, our food pantries is severe, and will be severe throughout the summer. Thank you for your consideration.
I don't know anybody who can speak faster than Mr. Henry. Thank you, and thank you for being here today. Appreciate that. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak during our public comment time? Seeing none, let's move on to the next item on our agenda, which is approval of minutes.
I move approval of the minutes for June 28, 2023.
Second. Were there any comments or corrections? I think the only correction I had was taken care of. It was just a minor Scrivener's error, so with that, I'll call for a vote on the approval of the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion passes three to zero. Next item, please.
Move approval of the claims docket accounts payable July 5, 2023.
Second. And we have Ms. Miller here for a change. Good morning.
Good morning. The accounts payable claims docket for July 5, 2023 totals $3,47,698.53.
Come answer questions?
No, I don't.
No questions? I don't either. It was pretty straightforward this week. So is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, call for a vote on the approval of the claims docket. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion passes three to zero. I will note for the record that we had no reports, and the next item is just for, and new business is just, I believe, for discussion. Is that correct?
Correct.
So this is Presentation of the County Form 144, a Statement of Salaries and Wages Proposed for the Calendar Year 2023. And we have someone from the Auditor's Office here. Hello, Ms. Malone.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Sarah Malone. I'm with the County Auditor's Office, and I'm here to present the 144s. These are the statements of salaries and wages proposed for calendar year 2024. The agenda says 2023, so I just wanted to make that clarification. The county form number 144 is required to be filed by each department head or elected official, board or commission, whose officers or employees are paid by county funds. This form must be filed with the county auditor not later than July 2 each year. In turn, the county auditor must present the county form number 144 to the Board of Commissioners at the July meeting of the board. The Board of County Commissioners shall review the statements and make their recommendations for the consideration of the county council prior to August 20.
So as usual, you are performing your tasks in a timely manner. I appreciate that. Any comments or questions?
No, I don't. No questions. Thank you.
I want to thank Ms. Gregory for forwarding the information to me so I could review all the forms. It's quite lengthy, so I appreciate that. And so I am in agreement with forwarding this to the county council.
I'll take it under advisement.
Oh, we take it, okay. All right. We appreciate you being here. Is there any?
Thank you.
Can we take a public comment on something like this? Okay. Oh, and you're in a boot as well. My goodness. Okay. Let's move on to item B.
I move approval of the Matrix Integration Service Agreement Fund named Community of Capital Development Fund, Fund Number 1138, in the amount of $2,700.
Second. And we have Mr. Crone here to talk to us about this.
Good morning, everyone. Greg Crone, Technical Services Department. Due to a hardware failure of a component known as an adaptive security appliance, or commonly known as an ASA, our Sheriff's Reserve Building currently has no network or phone access at all in that building. The security appliance, for lack of a better term, is a router or modem on steroids. It's, security is built into this because you don't want people hacking into your wireless signal, obviously, when you're transferring the data. So this is a much more secure appliance than what a standard router or modem would be. We've had to have these configured previously by another company during the previous director's tenure. This piece of hardware was approximately 10 years old, so it's no surprise that it failed. So this request is to have Matrix Integrations come in, configure that ASA hardware, and get that installed for us so that we can have network again at the reserves.
Thank you. Comments or questions?
No, I don't.
No questions. Thank you for doing this. I'd like to let the public know that the reserve deputies volunteer their time. They help to raise the money for their own equipment. They're a pretty amazing group of volunteers in our community. They fill in when there's extra need, when somebody's out sick. I mean, they're just an amazing group of people. So I personally am very happy to support them in this way.
And right now, they're having to come in from abroad all the way into the sheriff's station in order to process reports and do their daily business. So this really interferes with that situation.
Yeah. Understood. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, call for a vote on Matrix Integration Service Agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion passes three to zero. Thank you, Mr. Crone. Next item, please.
I move approval of the Adult Protective Services Contract. Fund name: Adult Protective Services. Fund Number 9112, in the grand amount of $551,733.58 for two years.
Second. Thank you. And I believe we have Ms. Hamlin here today. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Good, good. This is our request for signature on the APS contract. It's entered into between the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, the prosecutor, and Indiana Family and Social Services Administration Division on Aging. Typically, this is a one-year contract. However, this contract is a two-year contract running from July 1 of 2023 through June 30 of 2025, and the funds will pay for the provision of adult protective services in Monroe, Morgan, and Owen County.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Commissioner Jones?
No, I'm just very pleased that this program is continuing.
It might be useful for the public, if you would, to explain the role of adult protective services and how people can get in contact if they need assistance.
Sure. Adult Protective Services investigates allegations of endangered adults that are either being exploited or abused. They perform the investigation and then refer for services, occasionally appearing in court if it gets to that point. They can be reached at area code 812. Hold on, I'm getting the phone over here. And if you have any further questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you. I believe we have an office for adult protective services in the Curry Building. Is that correct?
It's actually in the showers building.
The showers building now? Okay.
Yeah.
Excellent. I'm glad, like Commissioner Jones, that we have this available in our community. So is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, call for a vote on the Adult Protective Services Contract. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion passes three to zero. Next item.
I move approval in agreement with B&amp;H Electric Service. Fund names are county general and non-reverting, fund numbers 1,000, 1178, and 1179, in an amount not to exceed $2,000.
Second. And we have Ms. Whitmer of the Parks Department here. Morning.
Good morning. This is for repairs for small motors, mainly pumps.
And this is just a service contract?
Correct.
Yes. Comments or questions?
No, I don't.
No questions.
I don't either. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, call for a vote on the B&amp;H Electric Service Agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Whitmer. Next item.
I move approval of Strategic Communications Agreement. Fund name: County General. Fund Number 1,000, in the amount not to exceed $25,000.
Second. And I believe we have Mr. Cockrell here to talk with us about this.
Yes, this is kind of a slightly modified version of a contract that was approved on March 1, 2023. The exhibit from that original contract remains the same. This is for a communications support, particularly with getting information out to the public on activities and questions that are before the county. This contract will run through the end of this year. It does have a not-to-exceed amount of $25,000, so if we hit that $25,000 mark before the end of the year, it would terminate earlier, or you or the contractor would have a 10-day period where you just give notice to end the contract if you need to end it earlier. So that's essentially what this is for.
Thank you. Comments or questions?
Yeah, I'm very pleased to see this happening. It's something we've really needed for quite a long time, and it is important that the public knows exactly what is going on with county government, and that's difficult information to get out.
Commissioner Thomas?
Same.
Yeah, I don't need to add anything to that. I'm also pleased that Ms. Brackney has agreed to work with us and for us. So any public comment on this item?
Good morning. Dave Asens with the B-Square Bulletin. Just a quick question. And this is laziness on my part. I apologize. I could go and look this up in the historical records, but I figured I would save myself some time because I think that Mr. Cockrell knows the answer off the top of his head. There was a similar item to this within recent memory, and I don't remember if it was last year or not, but this seems to be, to my recollection anyway, the second instance of this, and I was just looking to get confirmation that this is a, I mean, might be considered a renewal of some kind.
Well, it's.
Thank you.
It's technically not a renewal because it was never executed. So if this contract references the March 1, 2023 contract that was approved and specifically says this replaces that contract. So you are correct, we had something very similar to this in March, but we've changed a little bit of the language to make this contract more viable for the vendor.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment on this item? Seeing none, call for a vote on Strategic Communications Agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion passes three to zero. Next item.
I move approval of ordinance 2023-24, creating a capital improvement board.
Second. And we have Mr. Cockrell here to talk with us.
Yes, and I hope this isn't a shock to anybody that we've been talking about the capital improvement board since prior to the pandemic. This is, recently, we've had a working group that included Commissioner Githens, Councilwoman Wilts, and Councilwoman Scambolari from the city council, working together to get a interlocal put, a draft interlocal out there for people to review. That draft interlocal is out. This ordinance is very similar to what you guys approved last, I believe it was last October, November, but that had expired at the end of the year because there wasn't the necessary approval from the other entities. This document does not require that necessary approval from the other entities, but it is basically setting up a CIB, which is supposed to oversee and look at the convention center and its expansion project that we've been contemplating since 2017, if not prior to that. This is just a step in that direction. It does not alleviate the need to have an interlocal with the city of Bloomington, as well as other parties that may come up. I'm thinking that CIB may have a role in some kind of agreement in the future, but any of those type of agreements, this does not alleviate that. This merely puts the CIB as an entity to follow the statutory rules that they have and says who will appoint them. It does outline some of their duties, which would include, and this is Section 4, "The CIB shall select the site for the expansion of the convention center expansion components, including a site plan, select and contract with the operation and management organizations, oversee the process for hotelier partner selection, name the expanded center, hire/retain support staff, and the need for additional amenities, including a parking garage." So essentially, this is turning over a lot of those kind of decision-making processes to the CIB. I did forward this to the city administration. They responded with, and they also responded with comments to the interlocal, which is a very related but different conversation, and they did not express support for this at this time because they wanted to work out a lot of the issues with the interlocal. So I wanted to pass that along as well.
Thank you. Comments or questions?
Yeah, this has been a very long time in coming, and I'm glad we finally reached this point, and very sincerely hope that there will be a lot of cooperation in moving forward from here.
Yeah, we do, I agree. We do rely on that cooperation, and it was promised to us before the food and beverage tax was ever implemented. So we do look forward to working with our partners in the city and getting this done right. So we do look forward to working with our partners in the city and getting this done right.
I'm gonna hold my comment until after public comment, so is there any public comment on this item? We might have more than one public commenter. Yes.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jeff McKim, Monroe County Council. I just wanted to let you know, and let anybody know who hadn't seen the County Council meeting work session last week, that the council voted unanimously to express our strong support for the path that the Commissioners are contemplating taking today. So I very much hope that you create the CIB, and thank you for your work in getting this done.
I will note for the record that you were part of the County Council that approved the food and beverage tax as well, and so you sat through many hours of discussion about this.
Convention Center.
Commissioners, my name is Peter Iverson. I am a Monroe County resident. I'm also a member of the County Council. Thank you for getting this back on your agenda and moving forward, and I, of course, urge you to approve this. One of the reasons why I wanted to stand up in support of this legislation is the collaborative nature found in Section 2. There's just so many components of our community involved in doing this work, but at the same time saying that this work needs to be done by this body. Thank you so much for putting in this collaborative public management. It just goes a long way to making sure that the Monroe Convention Center is indeed for the people here in Monroe County. Thank you for your support of this legislation.
Thank you for taking the time to come in today.
Good morning, Commissioners. Eric Spoonmore, President of the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. I had plans, actually, to be out of town today, but when I saw the agenda come out on Monday, I swiftly rearranged those plans so I could be here in person. Mainly so I could say thank you to you all for your leadership on this. The Chamber 100% supports this capital improvement board. I know this is just one component, but I think it's a very momentous component that is being established here today. So we think you're doing the right thing, and again, I'll say it, I don't know how this could be any more fair between the county and the city, and totally agree with Commissioner Thomas's remarks that this was always intended to be a partnership, an equivalent partnership from day one. So thank you for your leadership on this. I also want to thank the County Council for your leadership and continuing to support this project and, you know, playing a leadership role with that. I want to thank the City Council for their work with the Commissioners on the capital improvement board, as well as the interlocal agreement. I know there's still some things to work out there, but you guys are certainly all on the right track, and we support all of that 100%. I say this every time I'm up here, but if there's anything I can do to help facilitate and support continued momentum on this project, let me know. The Chamber wants to help in any way possible. So thank you all.
Thank you, and I'll note for the record that Mr. Spoonmore sat through the discussion of food and beverage tax when he was, yeah, says to Commissioner Thomas, when they were on the County Council. Thank you. Jones, sorry. It's been a bad few days. I'm surprised I'm still here. Yeah, good morning.
All right. Good morning. My name is Jen Pearl, and I'm the president of the BEDC. I just wanted to take a moment to thank you for looking for ways to move this forward. The Convention Center is such an important facility for people in the community here now. We hear from our existing members and businesses who employ many people across the community that they are in need of space for their operations now, for trainings, for meetings, and other things like that. So thank you so much for your time on this, and we appreciate it.
Thank you for being here today. I can't remember anything else drawing this much attention over the last few years. Yes, Mr. Askins.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Dave Askins with the B-Square Bulletin, and there was a mention made of the interlocal agreement. And just one nuts-and-bolts question. Has the county received written feedback from the city administration on the draft, or on the most recent draft of the interlocal agreement? And if you could say something about your hope for timeline for getting that ratified, and then maybe an alternate question, a realistic timeline for getting that resolved. Thanks.
Go ahead. Me? Okay, so I, is there anybody, oh, there's someone online that wishes to speak first. Go ahead. Ms. Councilmember Munson. Please go ahead.
Thank you. This is Cheryl Munson, member of the County Council and longtime supporter of the expanded Convention Center. I think in the County Council, there remains only two of us that actually voted to help finance the expansion with the food and beverage tax. And I want to tell you that our food and beverage tax post-pandemic has been very healthy. Monthly reports just came in for May, and there was a total of $426,000 added to the food and beverage tax fund. This means that we have the financial security to take on this project. And now we only need the CIB and the interlocal agreement to move forward. Thank you, Commissioners, for working to put together the CIB and the arrangements that will facilitate cooperation. We do have a deadline for getting our plans in order and filed with the state, and I think everybody will be keeping this in front of them. December is the drop-dead date. So thank you, Commissioners, for your work.
Thank you, Councilmember Munson. Is there anyone else who wishes to make a public comment about this item? Seeing none. I'd like to go back just a little bit in time and say that during the pandemic, I personally was not sure if Convention Center business was going to come back. And I wasn't sure where I would fall on this particular item. But I attend the Downtown Business Inc. meetings. I attend other public things that are related to our Convention Center. And business is back, and they're having to turn away businesses, or conventions, rather, that require a larger space, or they're having to turn away conventions that they could accommodate two at a time if they had a larger space. And what happens with these kinds of conventions, that oftentimes, they come during the week when our, especially our hotels, are not at capacity. And so it is a way to fill those hotels, increase the taxes that we can raise to support the Convention Center. And so at this point, I am in favor of moving forward with that, with the Convention Center expansion. I went back and looked at some of the testimony comments made during the December 13th, 2017 minutes that, in which the, was the final meeting at which the Monroe County Council voted to create the food and beverage tax. And I know that there was a lot of outcry on both sides for getting this passed. And the mayor came several times to some of the meetings that were held, as did his deputy mayor, Mick Reniason, at the time. And basically, the mayor urged, in fact, he almost pled, it felt like, for the passage of the food and beverage tax to do the Convention Center expansion. He multiple times said, expressed his strong commitment from the city to continue the collaboration with the county and the private sector. He said things like, "Well, first, I'd say it's something we'd expect to work on with you. This is not just a city project. This is a joint project." He said things like, "In addition, strong collaboration between the city and the county in the planning and development of this project is basically necessary." And so there were several other things in those minutes that could be extracted that indicates that the mayor intended to collaborate fully on this project. And so we have heard that, yes, that they're not, the mayor's office, even with all the public outcry and public support that we've had for the capital improvement board, that the mayor still is not listening to the community, it feels like, in supporting this particular method for moving forward. We have met in public, or there has been a public meeting and a work session with the City Council members also, who at this point have expressed their support for all this, as has the County Council, and many members of our business community. They want this to move forward. They think that it will be good for the community. I think that we can also have an impact when we talk about the expansion in terms of ensuring that it is environmentally friendly, in terms of the building itself. We can do things like ensuring that the folks that work on the expansion earn a living wage. We can ensure that there are licensed folks working on the expansion. So I think that we can do a lot to make a difference within our own community with this expansion. I will also say that we have heard expressed by the mayor's staff, and this started at the meeting, with the work session with the City Council, that the city is interested in taking over the construction of the expansion. That's not collaboration, in my view, and it also is not, it's not something I'm ready to turn over. I feel like that the CIB, the kinds of folks that we envision being on this, and I really appreciate the people in our community that give their time to things like this. I believe that they have the ability to determine who should be the construction manager, who should, what kind of design they want to see. And so I feel that the construction of the expansion is something that should be under the umbrella of the CIB itself. It is not something that I am ready to turn over to the city. And so that is part of the interlocal that we're looking at. As Councilmember Munson indicated, we do have a timeline for some things, but I also feel that we have seven members of the CIB that will be on that, that we can move forward if there were only five members on that with what we want to be doing, with those five being appointed by the Commissioners, the Council, and the City, County Council and the City Council. So I invite the mayor to join us. I invite his support for CIB and for having the CIB oversee the expansion in all phases of the Convention Center. And I think I've said enough on this.
Can I add something?
Please.
Okay, thank you so much. No, and I think you raised a number of great points. I think we, you know, as we talked about last week during the work session, we can either become, you know, incredibly detailed in this interlocal agreement, or we can be very basic, and it sounds like being very basic may be the way to go. I think it's also important to remember that this is supposed to also be a civic center and providing space for our many social service agencies to hold meetings and for the public to to be able to utilize this space that they helped fund. I think that's going to be really important. I think it's great that the City Council has shown leadership and lived up to the promises made by others, and appreciate their work and ongoing effort, as well as yours, Commissioner Githens, on getting this ironed out. So to Mr. Askins' question, yes, we have a deadline, which is December.
December 1st, I believe.
But we hope to be done sooner, I imagine. There certainly are some things we do need to iron out. And I will say, if this passes, that I would encourage members of the public to go ahead and start applying. Go to co-monroe.in.us and complete an application for Board of Commissioners and write down Capital Improvement Board, or CIB, and, because we're going to be looking to make some appointments pretty quickly. Thank you.
And if this passes, the County Council will also have an appointment. So, yes.
Make sure the applications.
You have more to add? Commissioner Jones?
Yes. I was on the council at the time that this vote came up, and it was a very close vote. It was a 4-3 vote to pass it. I'll have to admit, I was one of the people who voted against it. Since that time, I've come to realize that this is something that really will benefit our community. And I was reassured, even though I voted against it, that we would have the city's cooperation and that they would work with us to improve the Convention Center. The Convention Center is actually owned by the county, and it's funded by the Innkeeper's Tax, which is a tax that comes to the county. I think that that is, indicates a very good reason for cooperation in going forward with this.
I think too, you know, people were giving me a hard time when it was first sworn in as county commissioner, and they were saying, "Oh, you have so much power." And I was like, "No, I have so much responsibility." And that responsibility is in every single vote I take, basically, because I'm not just committing myself today or the county today. I may be committing the county for 20 years to come. And so those commitments that we heard verbally from people were commitments long-term for the county, long-term for the city. And I hope that that carries through, and that we make sure that people live up to their commitments. And I would urge people, if you are so inclined, to let people know via phone calls, letters, whatever, what your support is for the expanded Convention Center, and let all parties, that it will be signatories to this. Let them know. Are we ready for a vote?
I believe we are, yes.
Okay. With that, I will call for a vote on ordinance 2023-24, creating a capital improvement board. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero. I don't think that's ever happened before either. Whoa, okay. Can we, can we just, are we over yet? Okay, let's move on to the next item.
I move approval of the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation (BEDC) agreement, fund name county general, fund number 1,000, in an amount of $30,000.
Second.
Mr. Cockrell, you're up again.
Yes, this is an agreement that will continue and through the end of this year. This is an item that we have, we started last year, it's a program we started with the BEDC last year, where the, and the the County Council has appropriated funding both last year and this year for this project. It's $30,000 to support BEDC. And some of the things they do, they gave a pretty long and thorough presentation last week, so I think that's a better source for all the items that they do for the community and the things that we expect them to do under this contract. But for the contract provisions, this is a, it will expire at the end of this year. It requires them to do a reporting early next year on their activities this year. And it outlines certain specific things we really want them to focus on as they move forward. So if you have any questions about any of the actual programming that they do, I know Jen Pearl with the BEDC is here, and it's a much better source of information for that.
Commissioner Jones?
I actually have some questions for Ms. Pearl.
Okay, and?
No comments right now.
Welcome back.
Did you have anything you wanted to say first?
Just thank you for your consideration. I know the presentation I provided next week, I'm happy to elaborate on any questions that you may have for that.
Yes. My question, well, I'm not sure that I entirely understand what economic development does. When I was young, it meant building infrastructure. Now it seems to have come to mean a whole lot more than that. And I applaud all the information that you've been gathering. It's very complete and thorough and very useful information. I would just like to hear how you plan to move forward with that information.
With the information provided, in terms of?
That you've been collecting and, yeah.
And the strategic steps that will be And the strategic steps that we'll be taking as well in the community.
Yes, yes. How does this information come to directly benefit the community?
Yes, so the information that we've collected through the Economic Vitality Project, for example, is, and let me take one step back. So what is economic development? Because that's a question that we get a lot. My own mother probably doesn't know what I do, I think. It's essentially fostering conditions for prosperity in a community. And that can relate to jobs, housing, workforce opportunities, education, et cetera. I used to work in public health, and the social determinants of health and economic development are actually very kindred. As you very rightfully said, Commissioner, that 30 years ago, it was put a company in a building. Great, we have jobs and investment. But we hear from our companies now, we need much more in our community in order to have vibrancy and prosperity. So the Economic Vitality Project has been our way to try to pull people together around what those needs are in the community and find ways to address them together. Commissioner Githens, we really appreciate all the time that you've spent on that project, a significant amount of time. So to answer the question about what will we do with that information, one, it's to better help us focus on where we think we can make the greatest impact with our vision. So what is that vision as a community? And where we can make investments together as a community? And bringing that voice to all of our decision makers, whether they're in the private sector, the public sector, the nonprofit sector, to say, hey, here's how we can, like, row in the same direction. A lot of the things are not surprising, right? So we know we have workforce challenges. We know we have housing challenges. We know we have, yes, infrastructure challenges too, in order for our current companies to be able to thrive, as well as to attract future focused jobs. So writ large, what we will do with that information is really pulling together conversations and focusing on projects that we can move forward. Implementation is very critical to us. We do not want a study that sits on a shelf. I think everybody's over it when it comes to things like that. So that leads me to the next step, which is for BEDC projects. You know, it's focusing on the types of jobs that we want to make sure we're fostering that are here and now, the companies and what they need, and giving a voice to that and finding ways to find those things, whether it's workforce, housing, et cetera. But then also going after future focused jobs that are a great fit for our community, for the land that we have, for the talent that we have, for the opportunities that we know are on the horizon with the other assets that we have in the community. So the benefits that we hope that we bring are not only, you know, capital investment, which impacts taxes and good things like that, but it's also a strategic focus so that we can all row together in the same direction and figure out what tangible steps that we can move forward.
So the money that you're requesting right now, is that going to go towards implementation?
The funding for 2023 is a part of our base budget, and so what that supports in the 2023 year is staffing and fixed costs like that. So yes, that is kind of a first step on implementation, because our staff has to be able to take some initial steps to move it forward. There will be some initiatives that we find that will arise from this, where additional resources may be needed. We have plans for raising funds for that, both from, you know, private sector, from grants, from other public sector sources, because we see that as a very shared endeavor across the community.
So basically, you're using this money to figure out how you can ask for more money?
No, we're using the current funding. Thank you for that clarifying question. So the funding for this year funds our current activities. So the work that we do in partnership with the county on, you know, receiving leads that come in, on guiding those leads through the process of approvals with the community. So when I talked last week about capital expenditures and others through business retention, expansion, attraction projects, that, when I talk about our base budget, that is a big portion of what we do, as well as the staff time that is currently going into, you know, moving forward for our next steps on the EVP.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Jones.
I think I made my statements at the work session. I'm dismayed to see that without a contract in place, that the money was sort of counted on. I get it, because the council approved it. And, you know, this has been, this has been a tough one for me, because I don't see an end to this. I think this is something where you're going to keep coming back and asking for more money every year, because we already have a membership and we already pay in. And so now, if you're asking for this to be the new normal, then I think you should ask for that, honestly. And, but, you know, I'm going to support it, but I'm going to tell you that I'm probably not going to do that in the future. I don't want you to be short this year, right? So the thing is, it's very difficult to track what work has been done by the BEDC versus what might happen organically, versus what else brings people to Monroe County, what else brings businesses to Monroe County, how it develops on its own. It's very difficult to track. And, you know, we've asked for sort of a status report, and I think it's hard to do, because we don't know what, and this is true anywhere, it's not just here, I'm not, you know, certainly not criticizing the BEDC. It's just economic development corporations are, they, it's difficult to track what impact they actually have. And I think that that's a disservice to the taxpayers. But I do think I'll support this today, because you've counted on the money. But I would say, make sure that you have, are okay, this board's okay, next year before you make your budget. Thank you.
I think that, as we talk about this, and I said this last week too, that part of bringing new businesses in is that we do supply good infrastructure for them to build on, and that whether you've got goods or services that you're selling. And we're also trying to do other things within our purview that make it attractive as well, whether it's expansion of broadband out into more rural areas, which allows some of the remote work and those other kinds of things. You know, last week at one of the meetings that I was at with you, somebody said, well, now that you could work remotely, let's bring people here who are earning east and west coast wages and have them pay into our local economy. So I do want to point out that, in some sense, the county does provide the infrastructure that you're out there selling. We don't know what little finger on the scale tips anything. We really don't. But I do want to say something that's very different from what I said last week. One of the things that I heard repeatedly at the EVP kind of discussions is that we are underrepresented here by people in the sort of the 21 to 35 age range. And it took me a while to put all the different data points together, but we also have a dearth of childcare opportunities. And when I stop and think about that, the 21 to 35 age range is when people typically would have young kids. And that may be another piece that we have to provide to get those types of employees into our community.
Childcare.
The childcare issue is huge. And so last week, I also was on, met with somebody to try to start to work on some of those issues as well separately. And we've got that opportunity right now with the ARPA funds to make that kind of difference. So hopefully, some of the other things we do as well complement what you're doing to try to help bring people into the community. And the fact that you can go out and sell that, hopefully, is something that is a benefit too. So is there any public comment now? Sorry, I got long-winded. Yes, please. Step up.
Commissioners, thank you. My name is Peter Iverson. I am a Monroe County resident, and I rise in support of the BEDC and this agreement. On June 14th, the BEDC hosted the State of the Regional Economy, and I was one of the very few county employees in attendance, and I bring you this report. At that meeting, Indiana University President Pamela Witten spoke about IU 2030 and the strength of Indiana University. The message was further buttressed by Professor Phil Powell, a Kelly School economist, who walked the crowd through local key economic indicators. The underlying message from both speakers was that we can be cautiously optimistic. The lunch underscored the undeniable benefits that the BEDC provides to Monroe County and its residents. Specifically, we have access to key economic data that assists in fiscal policy that's important for those of us on the council. Secondly, it showed the BEDC fills a vital gap in liaising with potential employers and county staff. This not only assists the work of the government, but also helps identify gaps in public service provision. These and more are in detail in the contract in the packet today as items A through E intersection three. In my view, the county simply does not have the staff to do this work, and the expertise of the BEDC staff is unparalleled in county government, and I ask you to vote in favor of our county in this agreement. Lastly, it also makes sense to me, to moving forward, that if we should have these agreements and if we should have these appropriations, that we align those more closely together when those appropriations are made, as I feel that this would reduce uncertainty and it would further ensure that Monroe County is able to make investments together and grow in the same direction with our partners. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Iverson.
Good morning, Commissioners again. Jeff McKim, Monroe County Council. I also serve on the executive committee of the BEDC, along with Commissioner Githens. As you just already heard, this commitment from Monroe County is part of the core budget for the BEDC and was appropriated in the county council's budget during the county's annual budget process last fall. This MOU allows us to carry out that budgeted commitment for 2023. County government's support of the BEDC is very important to the residents of Monroe County who benefit from the creation and retention of high-wage jobs that the BEDC's work is dedicated to fostering. I thank you very much for considering this request today. On behalf of the entire county council, I thank you and I urge you to support it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember McKim. Is there any other public comment here? We see Mr. Shelton remotely. Please go ahead, Mr. Shelton.
Good morning, Council. Jim Shelton with the chamber, speaking on behalf of the chamber. Just want to remind everybody that at one time, the county did have an economic development arm, I guess you would call it. I believe Matt Wasaki was the last person who had that job, and when it was ended, he came over to the chamber, which is why I happen to know that and knew him. And they continued to provide that function when there are people who are interested and they need somebody to talk to. You guys really don't have the staff. Mr. Cockrell could, I know, but he's got too many other things going on. So you've basically decided, or your predecessors, to contract that out, if you will, to the BEDC, and they've been doing a wonderful job. You know, a member of the RDC of the county. We interact with them on things like the Bloomington Rehab Hospital, deciding where to locate, et cetera. So I strongly encourage you also to approve this. I think it is far and away, probably the most economical way for the county to have the function of economic development that interacts with people who are interested in possibly locating here and need a lot of help and a lot of hand-holding sometimes to get things done. So I encourage you to please approve this.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton. I also see that we have Councilmember Crossley.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good morning, Commissioners. Councilwoman Jennifer Crossley here. I'll keep my comments brief, because I heard my other county council colleagues, their view and/or for the support for this as well. And I learned a lot from the BEDC, considering I would usually step in for Councilmember McKim when he wasn't available to attend those meetings. And I've learned a lot from Ms. Pearl and what the BEDC does and how they will continue to help our community. And I'd just say thank you for your time and your consideration on this matter, and that I urge you all to approve this as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Crossley. Is there anyone else?
Can I make a, I just want to clarify, because the minutes are going to reflect what Mr. Shelton said, and actually, it was Aaron Platt was the last person who worked in that position. And so I would hate to have somebody read these minutes and try to figure that out without that correction.
You may have to give that name to Ms. Freeman to get that into the minutes. Thank you. Is there any other comment or questions about this item? If not, I'll call for a vote on the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. Thank you, Ms. Pearl, for being with us.
Thank you so much, and we look forward to partnering moving forward. I also just wanted to say that we receive your comments very well, finding metrics, you know, so that we can always demonstrate the value to Monroe County residents and taxpayers, and really working together and being partners moving forward, especially as we do any agreements or initiatives. So thank you.
Thank you. Next item.
I move approval of Resolution 2023-21. It's a resolution of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners to create a Climate Resiliency Blue Ribbon Commission.
Second.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, thanks. Ready to have this one? Yep, this is the same thing we have on our package.
Yes, it's a separate item that people have to click on, on the website, but it's available as well. Okay. Mr. Councilmember Iverson. Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Again, we talked a lot about this last week. I know materials have been sent your way in terms of this important task force for environmental resilience. And I know that Mr. Cockrell has done quite a bit of work in the past week, along with Molly Turner-King. So I don't know that I have much to add about the ordinance under review that Mr. Cockrell can't say better.
Okay, well, one, it's a resolution, so, and the reason we chose to do a resolution is because this is a commission that will have a limited duration. I think in here it says, it limits it to, I believe, this will expire when the resiliency plan is completed or two years from the approval of this resolution, whichever happens first. So that's kind of the timeframe. We don't expect this to be, and there is a typo there. So we don't expect this to be a forever thing that we would put in as an ordinance into our code. It's for a nine-member commission that would be appointed by the county commissioners. The way it's currently drafted would have the McKinney Fellow be the chair of the commission as long as he is currently under contract with the county to perform these services. I understand from some emails that I read this morning that that may be problematic.
I'm going to actually propose an amendment.
Okay.
On that note, if I might.
Of course.
All right. So in section five, I'd like to amend the motion to read that member of the, one member of the Blue Ribbon Commission will be a Monroe County Commissioner, who shall serve as chair.
Yes, Mr. Iverson.
I talked with the McKinney Climate Fellow just yesterday, and that is a very favorable amendment. Both Indiana University and the Climate Fellow, I don't think, want to be in that position. So I thank you for the amendment.
Is there any other comment on the amendment? I have no comments. Seeing that, I'll call for a vote on the amendment, naming one member of the Board of Commissioners to the Blue Ribbon Commission and that person serving as chair. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Amendment passes three to zero. Now, is there any other discussion on the actual resolution?
I just want to encourage, I'm assuming it's going to be Commissioner Jones.
Jones to continue, that there's going to be a continued collaboration in terms of leading this McKinney Fellow through this process with the council. So that should be a team approach, if possible. So I'm just, would like to encourage Councilmember Iverson to ensure that the meeting times are appropriate. And, and I think this is a really great project and look forward to seeing how it continues to evolve over this next short timeframe. There's a lot of work to do. Thank you.
I'm just looking forward to working with you all on this. It's an exciting and much-needed project.
And when we, with what we've heard today, also about like the derecho wins that came through and what's happened, that the idea of resiliency is very, very important.
I could not agree more, and I had to restrain myself from giving you more data today. I know you've got a big packet today, but there's just so much that we can work on, so thank you for that comment.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and, and also the packet that we received, I found it very interesting that there are recommendations about the types of individuals that we'd like to see on this particular commission. People that are involved with natural systems like the aquatic, the marine, social systems, emergency services. I mean, it's a very kind of specific recommendations that came along with this, but it's, it's come along, I think those recommendations are from people that have thought about this a good bit in a way that I have not had the time or energy to do. So, yeah, this is very thorough, for sure. Is there any other public comment, or is there any public comments, sorry, on this item? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on Resolution 2023-21, a resolution of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, creating a Climate Resiliency Blue Ribbon Commission. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero. And thank you, Councilmember Iverson, for your attendance and for your work on this to date.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next item.
I move to award the bicentennial paving to E&amp;B Paving LLC, fund name Bicentennial Pathway Construction Fund Number 8950 in the amount of $277,560.
Second. And we have Ms. Ridge.
Good morning. We opened bids on June 29th at 10:00 a.m. We've received two bids, Milestone Contractors and E&amp;B Paving. The lowest and most responsive responsible bidder was E&amp;B Paving, so therefore we'd like to award the project to E&amp;B.
Comments, questions?
No, I don't.
It'll be great to get this done, but I, I just want to say that so much work went into just getting to the paving, and thank you for all of that attention to detail. It is a great project.
Yeah.
It really is. Appreciate it.
It's great bids. Hopefully it works out to have the paving done during the project. If not, it'll be spring, but hopefully we can work with the contractor to get that done.
I'm glad this will get done during my lifetime, is what it feels like.
Mine too.
Mine too.
Sorry. Oh, is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, call for a vote on the award of bicentennial paving to E&amp;B Paving LLC. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. Next item.
I move approval of American Structure Point Inc. Supplemental Number Two for Fullerton Pike Phase Three. Fullerton Pike TIF is the fund name, Fund Number 4922, in the amount of $46,100.
Second. Again, Ms. Ridge.
Thank you. So the supplemental is to cover the cost of the bidding phase and then the construction phase of any design changes during construction due to maybe some unforeseen conditions or design changes that have to be made at that time. All the existing funds that we had for design have been exhausted for such changes to the sound wall, new clomer permits and floodplain that are required, and then the bid clearing plans that we did for the tree clearing. So again, and this is a participating item with NDOT, so we will submit this supplemental to them to seek reimbursement of 80% when the funds are used.
Thank you. No, I don't.
Questions?
Nope.
I don't have any. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, call for a vote on the American Structure Point Inc. Supplemental Number Two for Fullerton Pike Phase Three. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero.
So I do want to make one recommendation for an appointment to the Human Rights Commission. I'd like to nominate Susan Gray to serve on the Joint Human Rights Commission. And.
I'll second that.
Second that. I will, I will note for the record that Susan has been serving on the county's Human Rights Commission and actively involved. She was, actually, the Human Rights Commission was out walking yesterday in the parade, and she was there with him, of course. And so it's my pleasure to have nominated her. All those in favor of appointing Susan Gray to the Human Rights, the Joint Human Rights Commission signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I apologize, I have been remiss in trying to reach out to some of the other potential appointees. I will try to get that done over the, very, very quickly. I apologize for that. Because, because there is some time pressure to get these things done, should we, I forget the correct term, suspend our meeting and come back together in a couple of days to try to do these other appointments?
Sure.
And I apologize for that. You can zoom in if I can get this done quickly. I apologize. We've had a lot of unforeseen things happen the last few days of my life.
I would just ask if you do that, you, you recess it to a specific time and date?
Yes. So would you like to do, like Friday, Friday morning?
Will you take a few minutes on Friday morning to zoom in? Can you attend on Friday morning?
I can.
Okay.
Just to make sure I get a reminder.
Okay. What, what do you recommend? Does nine o'clock work for you or 9:30?
A little later is easier. I have.
10 or 11?
10 is fine.
Okay. We will be, yes, so we will resume Friday at 10:00 a.m. And again, I apologize, it's.
And, and since we don't have any items on the work session, we have written a letter of support for Hoosier Hills Food Bank for a grant that they are applying for, and I would like to make a motion that we have Commissioner Givens sign and send that letter on behalf of the Board of Commissioners in support of their grant application.
Second. I fully support this. Is there any public comment on this item? All those in favor of a letter of support for HHB for their grant application signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. I will note that, again, that the Indiana Solar For All Grants, or for Indiana Solar For All grant opportunities are available. And for that, if you're interested, go to insf.org/participate. We are still holding a diaper drive to support individuals that go to Hoosier Hills Food Bank for their Fresh Friday drive-throughs. Those next two drive-throughs are July the 14th and August the 11th. If you have diapers, pull-ups, or wipes that you're willing to help donate, we have a Hoosier Hills Food Bank barrel down in the rotunda of the courthouse to receive those, or you can drop them off yourself individually at Hoosier Hills Food Bank. Free COVID testing is still available, both at our Monroe County Health Department and at the Monroe County Health Clinic on East Miller Drive. We are now gladly accepting applications for the Capital Improvement Board, and we urge people to apply so that we can make those appointments and get this moving, which is an exciting thing. We continue to hold our virtual office hours six times a month, so you can get onto our calendar and find when those are. Next week on Thursday, July 13th, from 1:00 to 6:00, there's the next blood drive out at IB Tech. There's also one on Friday, July the 14th, from 10:00 to 3:00. Following that in August, August the 23rd from 1:00 to 7:00, and 24th from 1:00 to 7:00, also there are more Red Cross blood drives. If you're interested, you can sign up at redcross.org. Please, as we've heard, because of multiple items today, if you wish to receive information about medical or weather alerts, please sign up at the Monroe County Alert Notification System. Again, that's co.monroe.in.us. And I'll remind everyone that additional assistance is available to all county residents who need support for their rent for their utilities. If you are in that position, I urge you to contact your township trustee. Every resident of Monroe County has a trustee that is responsible for that particular township, so get in touch with them if you need that financial assistance. We want to ensure that people stay housed and healthy. I don't have any other announcements. We do not have a work session today, so I would let people know that during, that next Wednesday we have training, so we will not be meeting next Wednesday, indicating that our next meeting will be July the 19th here in the Nat U Hill Room, starting at 10:00 a.m. And with that, we are recessed until Friday, July the 7th at 10:00 a.m.